Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our high allegiance is to the United States of America and to the republic of this land, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion for the executive minutes of October 15, 2014? So moved.
A second.
Already had discussion, roll call, vote please.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes. And a motion for the regular minutes of October 15, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, vote.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Welcome, I apologize that we were running a few minutes late, we did start early, anticipation of an extended executive session, couldn't quite fit it all in, and as I mentioned to Sam, it's a story of my life, we're on time all these months when he wasn't here and we're back and we were a little late, so I apologize. Onto some more important or other things, very important in fact is tomorrow is Veterans Day, and at 11:00 a.m. at the World War I Memorial, James Park, will be the, right on Condorso and Park Avenue, Madison Avenue Triangle there, will be recognition of our veterans, and I know we have a couple of veterans in the, or audience, any veterans in the audience, please stand up for a second, Sam?
Blair.
John Blair, thank you. Thank you for your service to our country. And congratulations, you know last week was election, so Carmella Vitale, Bob Landrigan, getting a little confused here, my mouth getting ahead of my mind, but congratulations and looking forward to working with you for another three years, and also a congratulations to Mark Shalanza for putting himself out there, as anyone who's run for public office you know it's not an easy job to do that, so we thank him for wanting to step forward. Okay, I'm gonna come down for both the Employee of the Month and our proclamation. Just to give you an idea of how the Employee of the Month program works in the borough is, borough employees and any department nominates a employee that is deserving of the award, goes to Ray and then it is reviewed and eventually we select our Employee of the Month. This month is a little different because the selection or nomination came from a couple of borough employees, and it was not an actual employee but a volunteer for the borough, but I think it's certainly deserved of the Employee of the Month because what this person does is equivalent of a paid position, this person happens to be elected official, but this is not in his role as elected official, but it is the role of our emergency operations manager, and, so come on up here Bob for a second. And, you know normally I would say you wouldn't qualify, but I think many towns, you're not qualified, but many towns certainly have this position as maybe a paid position, someone on staff that's responsible for working with FEMA to get our reimbursement back for all the money that was put out during various storms. So this morning we received a check, and I've got a extra large version, and this is the total, but today's check was for $448,000, and we had, so that brings all the reimbursements up to this grand total of 1.1 million and change, and so for our Employee of the Month, Bob, thank you so much for everything you've done to be active. We will deposit this tomorrow. Ernie, come on up. This is a proclamation proclaiming today, November 10, 2014, Ernie Secconi Day, really my mouth is not working today, in Madison, I always feel bad about these proclamations because here it is 8:30 and there's only three and a half hours left in Ernie Secconi Day, but you can drive around, you're allowed to drive around town and yell, it is my day, because you have earned it. Where Ernie Secconi has served as president of Madison Little League for eight seasons, and whereas prior to that he was a member of the board for four years, first as head of the majors division and then serving as Executive Vice President, and whereas due to Ernie's diligence and commitment, fundraising for the Madison Little League reached an all-time high resulting in various field improvements, and whereas installation of concrete pads at both Lucid D Field dugouts, new fencing at, and new fencing at both these fields, I think we're missing a field in there, I think Dodge Field was the other with the concrete, so it should be Lucid D and Dodge Field dugout, new fencing at both fields with roofs to protect the players from the sun and also from also flying foul balls, so all as a result of fundraising efforts that you led, and whereas additional improvements include installation of batting cage at Dodge Field as well as concrete pads in the dugout, and new fencing in front and behind the dugout was raised higher for safety reasons, and whereas under Ernie's leadership Madison Little League instituted the electronic service Team SNAP, enabling league to do registrations online, saving countless hours and long in-person registration lines as well as allowing better league communication via email, specific age groups, or to the league as a whole. Now therefore I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body to hereby proclaim November 10, 2014, as Ernie Secconi Day in recognition of outstanding dedication and commitment to making Madison Little League an excellent program benefiting hundreds of children, thank you for everything you've done for the last decade.
Just makes me tired thinking about it, but my biggest accomplishment was leaving the Little League in good hands and these gentlemen here who have stopped by today are the future of Madison Little League, running it anyway, and of course the future's the children and that's what we do it for, to keep it ongoing for the girls and the boys, so to the extent they keep doing it and the girls and boys keep enjoying it and playing ball, and you guys provide the fields and the support you have over the years, then all is good, and I thank you all for that.
Thank you, Ernie. And now reports from committees, health, Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you Mayor, well the first thing what you hear a lot about on the news now is Ebola, and the good news is there are no new cases in the state of New Jersey, and I don't believe there's been any reported in the United States to date, however, our Health Department has continued to work with our first responders to make sure that we're updated on the latest protocols which seem to change every day. In addition, we had a seminar or briefing for all first responders, an edited version of that was placed on RoseNet, it provides some good information about the disease, how it's contracted, and just some good common sense steps, so please take a look at that. Adult men are encouraged to attend the free men's cancer screening, that's gonna be on Monday, December 8th at 6:30, you can sign up at the Health Department from now through November 24th, and finally, both men and women are encouraged to check their heart health at the adult health screening on Wednesday, Department, thank you Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works Engineering, Mr. Catalonello.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and if I might beg your indulgence, on November 10, 1775, the Second Continental Congress authorized the raising of two battalions, and as such today is the 200, so I'd just like to say thank you here the day before Veterans Day for anyone who's had the courage to wear the eagle, globe, and anchor as well as the courage of all our veterans, and anyone who's ever been to a Marine Corps ball knows how much fun they are. Now on to more mundane things, the 2014 Road Improvement Program, milling and paving work for the remaining five roads has been delayed, Cephalon Sun Construction has indicated they can mobilize the paving subcontract this week, Thursday after successive delays over the past two weeks. NJ DOT and De La Pelo contractors have completed permanent striking on the repaved portions of Madison Avenue and Main Street. Gen Electric has completed the radar sign installation on Greenwood Avenue at Cole Park, due to the positive feedback, additional radar sign devices are likely to be purchased and installed on other major roads in the next year. The 2014 sewer lining projects are out to bid, final repairs to the flow monitoring device on Brook Lake Road were completed last week, a certification from the installer will be received shortly and the flow monitoring results will be delivered to a third-party independent professional for input regarding the Madison-Chattanooga joint meeting budget process. At the library, the HVAC system, sealing and lighting repairs designed by EI Associates for this project was advertised on October 2nd, and the borough will be receiving bids this Thursday, November 13th for the project anticipating spring construction. The Waverly Green parking lot is being drafted at this time and anticipating a fall bid and late spring construction, and there is a strategic planning, Capital Committee meeting is scheduled for November, this says November 12, but I think it's November 20, oh I'm sorry, was it switched to the 20th?
Capital is 26.
The 26, yes, so it's the 26th, at 7:00 p.m. I'll address for that, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Oh, congratulations Bob and Carmella on victory well earned.
Utilities, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you Mayor, from the electric department, they finished installing all the primary voltage cables at the North Street Pump Station, so that whole project is going along very well, there's a lot of cooperation with DPW, the sewers, electric, and whatever to get that project absolutely complete, which is really very important. They installed new service disconnect for Rosedale skating lights, that's also important if we have a nice cold winter, they installed overhead lines for video monitoring at the Police Department impound yard, they're also doing a new overhead service to the Public Works pole barn, which is, I believe is up now, they just put that in, and they began changing out of large revenue meters, I'm gonna do a little more work on finding out what they're doing and kind of report that because that's kind of interesting, but that's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety, Ms. Bailey.
Oh, thank you Mayor, yes, my congratulations to both Bob and Carmella, and the Police Department and the PBA delivered 3,334 pounds of food to the Interfaith Food Pantry about two weeks ago, and I applaud them for their volunteer efforts and helping the community in more ways than one, that's all Mayor.
Thank you. Finance, Borough Clerk, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you Mayor, I have a similarly brief report, strategic planning committees are now lining up to make presentations, council meetings, we're gonna begin on the 24th with the Communications Group, on the 8th of December, that is our meeting in December, right there, Municipal Budget Group, and the first meeting in January, which is the 12th, Electric Utility, and the second meeting on the 26th, Capital, so we're trying to get them all in so they can be something that council can look at with regards to planning a budget for the forthcoming year and years after that, and we're gonna be a little tight to the wire here, but I think we're gonna make it, so certainly Communications is lined up, Municipal Budget's report is also lined up, and we are having smaller meetings with subgroups of council members because the budget report is quite dense and a bit complicated, but nevertheless we'll distribute it publicly and committee members will certainly be happy to answer any questions. Electric rates have been something we've talked about for a while, the mayor had committed to a review before the budget process begins, and indeed that we will at least begin talking about it on the 24th of November, but I expect that the whole issue will be around for a bit before we resolve it, so the whole notion of rates and what surplus looks like etc. will be very much on the table, and thank you, I'm done.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations to Carmella and Bob. Senior Center Advisory Committee, the Stretch and Flex Program for 2014 continues to be very popular, 20 students are currently registered, and attendance from January through August has totaled over 500. Monica Hansen's Nutrition and Cooking classes continue to attract an audience, her recent program on pre and probiotics drew 14 members, and we plan to post recipes on our website after each class to promote the series. And finally, at a recent meeting with the Director of the Harmony House Adult Center, which opened earlier this month on Division Ave. Madison, the Senior Center learned that the center, that that center will be providing suitable services for adults who are at risk, at risk if left home alone, minimum of three days per week care is required, and there is a sliding scale fee, currently no transportation is available, but it may be added if necessary, if the need arises, an open house is being held on Wednesday, December 3rd from 4:00 to 6:00, 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I, point, just one point, I was so interested in getting you all up to speed on where we are with the strategic planning committees that I forgot to add my congratulations to Carmella and Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Rowe, for your report, and speaking of having to go back, I just found my library report in my notes here that I didn't see before, and this first part is very important because it's very apropos to tomorrow being Veterans Day, because on Wednesday night, the 12th, 7:00 p.m., Harry Etlinger will speak about his experiences as one of the monuments men during World War II. He was a German Jewish teenager who fled Europe, only returned to fight as an American six years later, he became one of the 350 monuments men who helped recover and save priceless art that was looted by the Nazis, and there is no reservations required, and this is being funded by the Friends of Madison Public Library, and as we look back to World War II and as our greatest generation is aging, these are stories that we certainly don't want to lose, and so it certainly sounds like a great program, encourage people to go to that. Also, the Friends want to remind you, they fund the library's museum pass program, the library cardholders are invited to borrow a museum pass which gives an opportunity to visit museums in the metropolitan area free of charge. Included in the program are Grounds for Sculpture, the Intrepid, the Frick Collection, among others, and local museums include Museum of Early Trades and Crafts, Mars Museum, McCullough Hall, Craftsman Farms, and the Montclair Museum, and so we appreciate all the support from the Friends of the library that deliver these programs. Any communications and petitions?
Yes, Mayor Council, Mayor Council received a letter dated November 7th from resident Bob Jennings Walbright Circle regarding the Green Village Road School redevelopment amendment before the planning board.
All right, now we are on the first of two invitations for discussion, this is limited to items on the agenda discussion, and also resolutions that are listed on the consent agenda, the tonight's agenda discussions include the Council Code of Conduct, the 2014 budget transfers, the Open Space Recreation Report, and then also any of the resolutions that are listed, if you need, want to comment on any of those, please step to lectern, state your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard, then state the agenda item or the resolution you're speaking about, and then keep your comments to three minutes or less, anyone wishing to comment on items on the agenda? Sam, welcome back.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate Carmella and Bob, there's two resolutions, I just want to see what they're about.
You're a little rusty, nickname and address.
Oh, Sam, South Carolina, Park Avenue, still live there, yeah? Resolution 306, what did that cost us?
That the tax, $6,600.
You know, we got the budget coming up, and I know around several years ago, whatever, a few years back, on 307, do we still check these garbage trucks, in other words, sometimes, you know, it's late at night and they're in another town, and they come to Madison 4:00 in the morning with a half load of truck that we end up paying for some other town, and the thing we were gonna do is the Police Department, the cops with the cars riding around, they were gonna check these trucks, I mean, you know, could add up to a lot of money, do we still do that?
Yep, so we do have a member of DPW is, starts the day at 5:00 a.m., so he is part of the routine to do spot checks on the trucks.
That's happening then?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on items on the agenda? All right, we close this part of the agenda and move on to agenda discussions, first one is Code of Conduct, that was coming from my suggestion, and let me just set the table on this for a second, let me get to my notes. For those that have been keeping track of things here for a while, I first presented the idea of a Code of Conduct about two years ago, I believe, and then as same thing as now, it was not response to any particular behavior or anything, I think it was more my intent was the fact that we do a great job of governing here in Madison, and it was to reinforce those great habits we have. In my time of talking to residents that have come to council meetings, or watched us on TV or on YouTube, the feedback we get is they like seeing the way we conduct meetings, but in a way more important to me is that I've had reports from people in neighboring towns that say, you know, how do you do it in Madison, I'd love to see my own town do it the same way, and in a way when you have good behaviors and you follow good routines, it's not always by accident, and you can always reinforce those, and so that was the idea here, was to put things on paper, have good practices for conduct, when it was presented two years ago, I had what was probably a 15-page Code of Conduct, and I will admit that that was probably too much detail and not necessary at that level, working with our attorney, we scaled it down, some of the things may be things that are already covered by state law, but it's nice to have it all in one place that we all agree to on annual basis, and so what we have in front of us is the latest version, and I'll let Matt talk about, a little bit about the legality behind it, but my goal would be that the first time this is voted on would be on New Year's Day reorganization meeting as a resolution, and would be part of the annual reorganization, just as we adopt our bylaws, we at the same time would adopt the Code of Conduct, so Matt, if you could talk a little bit about...
Sure, what I'd like to do is, if there's certain questions, I'll take them down, I don't think it's appropriate for me to answer specific questions if it gets into the area of attorney-client privileged advice, I can issue another memorandum, I issued a memorandum today to give you some guidance, but if there's specific questions, I'll go through it in general terms, if there's specific questions, what I'll do is I'll take down your questions and prepare a memo so that you guys could consider it before the next meeting, and have a discussion and close executive session. The general rule is that the Code of Conduct has five different sections, some of them are just good practices, and I would say that's probably under the standards of conduct, and ultimately in number four, members' responsibilities, this is just conduct that I've revised the initial policy or the Code of Conduct that was promulgated, to try to give people some guidance on how to conduct themselves at meetings, how to conduct themselves when dealing with members of the public, how to conduct themselves if they're issuing their own press releases, which they're permitted to do, I've cited into the Code of Conduct, I make reference to the Borough Code 14-1, which deals with indemnification, so making it clear that if somebody, a member of the governing body decides to write a letter to the editor, take out an ad for their own candidacy or against somebody's candidacy, they do so at their own peril. If it's a governing body's dictate to issue a press release, it's gotta be a joint governing body decision. If Ray Cody was a member of the governing body, and Ray Cody wanted to issue a letter to the editor, and he said something that was defamatory, that might not be covered under your Code of Conduct, and that might not be indemnified by your insurance carrier, so that's something that I thought was important for people to understand that when they're taking that step. I do recommend, and it follows out of school boards, that when people are writing letters to the editor, that they identify that it's their own letter, it's not that of the governing body. The other thing I've put in here too is, I've recodified compliance with the ethics law, there is a law in New Jersey that deals with ethics, it's found in NJ SA 489-22.5, and there are statutory requirements that any members of local municipalities, housing authorities, boards of health, etc., must comply with a ethics law, and what's important about that, and the reason I recodify that here, is a lot of it ties in together, but the compliance with the ethics law, I think it's important for members of the governing body to understand that this law is the law of the books, it's a law that you must follow, and that the local finance board, which is part of the Department of Community Affairs, has jurisdiction over violations of this law, and can have a hearing and impose fines against governing body members who violate one of these provisions, so I think it's important to recodify it, in order for the other portions to be enforced by the local finance board, you'd have to create your own Board of Ethics. Now municipalities do have Boards of Ethics, I can tell you, for example, Marlboro, the town of Marlboro has its own Board of Ethics, and what happens is, if there's an ethics problem, it goes to its local Board of Ethics, it's reviewed by the local Board of Ethics, it could be more expansive than the state law, can't be less restrictive, but more restrictive, there could be a finding there, and then it's appealed to the local finance board. I don't think that's necessarily, that's codified here in this Code of Conduct, covers virtually everything, it's the state law, and I think the other standards of conduct and the members' responsibilities that are enunciated in this Code of Conduct are just best practices, that's what this is, it's giving people some guidance on how a governing body member should conduct his or herself, you know, in the course of their duties as an elected official, so if there's specific questions about it or legal questions, I'd be glad to take notes, put together a memo to give you some more guidance on it, but if there's anything you want legal guidance on, I think that'd be probably more appropriate in a closed executive session, and then I could come out with a finalized plan, and if you're more comfortable emailing me the questions, I'm fine to do that as well.
Thank you for the background and also the process, and what you covered is exactly what I, my goal here was, one for residents is to be a one-stop shopping spot of, okay, what should I expect and can I expect from my elected officials? Yes, today you could go to state code, you could look at multiple spots, but here it'd be all in one spot, and I certainly did not envision any ethics board here in Madison that, in a way I almost look at this as a pledge of performance as opposed to a very tight code, you know, that on annual basis, the council approves this, and I guess there should be some way to have the mayor, since the mayor doesn't get to vote, to make sure the mayor also affirms his support of the, he or she's support of the code, and then we just, you know, live by it, it's apple pie and good stuff. Questions, thoughts, Carmella?
I'm a little bit confused about, I think I heard Matt say that his recommendation is not that we have an ethics board, you just made a...
No, I don't think you should. I think the state...
That's a little bit different than what I was reading.
No, no, what I, I'm not gonna get into details, you can, in order to have a, to enforce all aspects of it other than just what the state law provides, so for example, in here there's a provision that talks about letters to the editor, if you're gonna do it on your own, people have a First Amendment... People have a First Amendment right to write letters to the editor. You have that right. My recommendation is if you're writing it on your own, you say, "I'm writing this on my own." Um, because you don't want people in the public to say, "Well, was this written by the governing body or was it written by Mayor Connolly?" Um, so I think that that's important, just so that the public knows where it's coming from. In order for that to be, that provision, I'm using this as an example, to be enforceable at the local level, you would have to have your own ethics commission locally where you could adopt, this is an ethics policy, have it approved by the state, and then enforce it. I don't think that's necessary. I think that frankly, what I've seen when, when, and when they have these local ethics boards, um, you know, it, it, it has, uh, you know, residents governing other residents, and it becomes a very, um, I, I think a very disruptive process. I think it's better that if you're having a problem with somebody's conduct as a, as an elected official, you go to a neutral agency, the state, and you go down to this local ethics finance board, they have professionals there, they know what they're doing, and they don't have any personal relationships, no animosity, they just make a decision based on the law. So that's my recommendation. And I think a lot of this is just kind of best practices, just being careful what, uh, you know, how you conduct yourself in dealing with staff members, members of the public, conduct at meetings, um, and, and it, it just, uh, puts it in one place where people can look at it and say, "These are, these are the rules." And this could be modified, we could expand it more. I don't think you need to expand it. I, I think that, um, it, it touches upon the key areas that you need, but I think it was important to recodify the state law.
Rob?
Thank you. Um, I, you know, I, I think if there's a state law, by and large, it should be good. And if, if you wanna institute a bunch of best practices, then you should call it best practices. Um, I have a couple of questions, um, and I guess you don't have to answer them now, but as it pertains to, the way I read this, and I'm probably reading it incorrectly, is I think it'd be very difficult for us to do our liaison jobs, given the, uh, the whole part about communication with employees. Number one, and number two, one could imagine the situation where, you know, unintentionally or intentionally, whatever, uh, a mistake is made, either in an open public meeting or, uh, in a letter to the editor wherein one council member makes a statement about another council member's vote or something like that. The way I read this is that if the council member whose vote was mischaracterized writes a letter and doesn't get approval from the person who made the statement to quote them, they're in violation of the ethics of, of, of this, of this code. So I find it, seems to me to be a direct challenge to common sense in that the person who gets in trouble under this code is the one who's correcting the public record. Uh, and number two, it seems to be a violation of, uh, my First Amendment rights to, to say something.
No, you, you have the right to, this, this does not preclude you. You have the right to say...
But you need to, you need to get permission to quote someone?
No, no. If, if you're gonna quote, there's two different things. If you and I are having a conversation privately and you quote me, what's the saying?
That's, that's off, that should be off limits. I'm talking about stuff at a public meeting.
If you're, if you're gonna go to the public record, this is all on tape, and you say, "At the meeting on November the tenth, Matt Giacobi said, uh, the code of conduct is blue."
Right. Okay.
According to public record, that's different.
So should we spell that out in that? Cause it's, it's hard, I mean, the way I read it...
Well, that's something that I can look at and decode.
Yeah, sure.
The other thing I would suggest is if you're called, a number, many months ago, I said, it's always, I, I prefer to have the dialogue at a public meeting as opposed to having dialogues in, in letters to the editor, um, because I think that it's, it's easier to have the, the dialogue here.
Fair enough.
That's, that's my, my recommendation. Um, but I think that if you're gonna quote the public record, it's the public record.
Fair enough.
If it's stated there, it's, that's real simple.
But if, if the stuff isn't enforceable, unless we form this other ethics committee, then I don't see why we're including it and maybe we should just call it a best practice memo. So that's, that's my input.
Well, we'll have Matt take a look at, uh...
Yeah, I could, I'll address that. I'll put together, you know, some more guidance.
Thank you.
Is that substantially different? If you call it best practices, or a code of conduct?
Or, or elected officials' pledge to Borough of Madison could be, you know...
No, I mean, I think, I think you could, you could, um, let me look at that and, and give you some guidance, whether we call it best practices, code of conduct. The bottom line is you have an ethical code of conduct that you must comply with. The one thing I think is important, and the reason I like to have it, I can tell you, I did it in another municipality, is we actually have a disclosure form where every elected official, every, not every elected, every employee, elected, appointed official, et cetera, has to disclose all their property ownerships in town.
We do that.
And sign an annual pledge every year.
But we do that to the state, but not necessarily to the residents.
Not every, not everybody does it. You do that on your financial disclosure form, and that's limited to certain people. In, in another town, it was for everybody, so that you make sure that people don't have, you know, are they coming forward complaining about a property or trying to influence something because it's their property or their parents' property? So that's something that you can do. Here, I, the reason I think it's important to have the code of conduct, um, or a code of conduct which recodifies the state law is, it makes it easier. People don't always have access to NJ SA forty-eight, don't know where to look for it. It's on your, if it's on your website, this is the, the code of conduct. And frankly, the ethics law doesn't only apply to you guys. It applies to all of your planning board members, your zoning board members, your housing authority members, your library members. It, and it basically says you can't engage in conduct that will involve a conflict of interest. You can't be promoting something for your family, your own financial interest, et cetera. Um, so, yeah, I'll take those comments and, and see if we can rework it and see if it's, whether it's best practices, code of conduct.
And the liaison thing too, I think.
Right. Yeah, the liaison, and I'll, I'll confer with Ray about the liaison.
Thank you.
You're talking about, you're like the liaison to the Board of Health.
What, yeah, whatever our liaison is, if, if, you know, how do we communicate with our, with staff based on this document?
As liaison to DPW, you need to be communicating with David Maines. How, how does that...
And we should apply for dinner, because, because if you're, if you're, if you're appointed as the, that liaison, you've been appointed by that with the advice of some of your colleagues. So then there's basically a tacit understanding that as the liaison to, you know, Board of Health, your colleagues have said you can have that communication. So...
Uh, Bob? Yeah, Matt, and you don't have to answer this now, but, uh, to the extent that we wanted to be more restrictive, would that necessitate that at local ethics board?
It would necessitate you having a local ethics board.
Right.
And it would necess- necessitate you to take the code of conduct, have it approved by the state, and then you could enforce it. I think it's, I think it's unnecessary, because when you have a local ethics board, you also have another added expense. You have to get separate legal counsel. It, it just becomes, I, I think it's an unnecessary expense. I think that if you have, um, the state law, it's, it's a fairly expansive state law, there's a lot of guidance on it, and I think it's always better to have some completely disinterested party looking at it.
I, I agree with you there. I'm not arguing that. I'm just trying to get the parameters in my head. And the other point is, where I worked at a major bank, uh, we had a code of conduct that we had to review and sign off every year. And a lot of that, we had to give up some constitutional rights. You know, it's a private corporation, and, you know, you're not allowed to write any letters or anything about the company in a newspaper, even though I have a right to free speech. When, we weren't allowed to do that, and knowing that we worked there, we accept that responsibility. Um, I'm gonna talk to you more about that offline here, uh, only because this whole issue with letters to the editor, it keeps coming up, it keeps surfacing. Some are in favor of it, some are against it, and I just wanna get a little more clarification on what we should and should not do here.
I mean, what I can just tell you generally is that the First Amendment is a fairly expansive, um, law and right that we all enjoy in this country. And people have the right, elected officials, people running for office have the right, citizens have the right to write letters to the editor, take scans on issues, you know, be pro-gun, anti-gun, pro-life, pro-choice, those are all people's fundamental rights. And you don't, just because you're elected official doesn't mean you give up those rights.
No, I understand that.
My point here is, is that if you're going to exercise your rights and you're, and you're speaking on an issue, unless the whole governing body said, "Let's speak on this issue. We want the council president to write a letter to the editor opposing the county's position on open space." That would be inappropriate, you know, you pass a resolution and the letter goes out. And we've passed resolutions where we've, the governing bodies have passed resolutions opposing certain legislation or upholding certain legislation. When that's put out there, there's an understanding that the whole governing, or majority of the governing bodies have approved it. My feeling is, is I think it's always better for folks that if they're gonna be writing a letter to the editor that hasn't been approved, they say it. "I'm writing it, I'm a council person, but I'm writing this on my own behalf." You know, or, or it hasn't been approved by the governing body. And I want people to understand that when they do that, they do it at their own peril. I mean, I, you know, I'm not, you know, if the governing body writes in this something, we review it. There's a legal review to the process. If you write a letter to the editor on your own behalf, we don't legally review it, so I can't tell you whether it's defamatory, slanderous, et cetera. You do that at your own peril.
Certainly one of my, uh, thoughts, uh, along a subject that keeps coming to my mind is the seven of us have a voice that sixteen thousand other people in Madison don't have, and that is be able to speak and vote at council meetings twice a month. So the, our power truly is in the level of doing discussion, and the, uh, power of writing letters is left to citizens that may, may not agree with what we say up here.
So you won't be surprised that I completely disagree with the last statement, but, um, the only concerns, I have two concerns. I, I do think most of this is very good. Um, the conduct with the borough staff, in addition to some of the points Rob raised, um, we've also had people who s- sit on this council who chair boards, and I want, who chair boards. Like Carmella sits, chairs the senior citizen advisory committee, I think somebody chaired the health department. So this would be in conflict with that, because they'd be actually managing or working directly with staff below the borough administrator level. So we need to make sure that that's covered.
Well, I think, I think what I said with, just before, and I think that was a good point that Rob raised about the liaison issue. When, when folks get appointed to the liaison and then you get elected, once you're on that thing, to the, the head of Board of Health or, um, Housing Authority, you've getting, you're, you already have the tacit approval of the governing body to serve in that role.
No, this, this is different though, because those are appointed positions, and we liaise, but there are points in time where people who sit on this council also have chair groups. They're elected by those groups to chair them. They're not appointed by the council or the mayor. So it's an extra level of authority. Liaison, you could argue, maybe you shouldn't be overact, over, um, interacting with some of these people, but as the chair of a department, you definitely have to have a certain higher level of responsibility. So we just have to be sure that that's covered.
I'll, I'll address that, not a problem.
And, and, you know, my point on the media relations, uh, the extent that I would support it is if it's ended at the end of the first sentence, because the rest of it, I believe, you know, violates my right, First Amendment rights to, um, to inform the citizens, in my view, on particular things.
It's a good, you're, you're looking at media...
Media relations.
I'm just curious. I didn't, I mean, I didn't read it that way, so I'm...
If I have to get someone's authority to quote them, I, I, my, my First Amendment rights being impinged, because I don't have the ability to speak freely.
But you were really talking about the third sentence, other, where it says other borough officials...
No, no, no. I said anything after the first sentence I would disagree with.
Even if you...
Yes.
You disagree with, not...
We've had this conversation. I don't believe it's required by law. I, you know, people think that that's the way it should work, I don't, I don't particularly believe that. I think it's the other way around. I think if somebody here writes on behalf of the group, they should state that clearly, um, because typically the, the editors of the newspapers put the names of the people who are writing the letter at the bottom, whether it's one or two or three. And if, if I write a letter and I, if I do try to pretend that I'm speaking on behalf of everybody, then you have an ethics charge against me. But if I write a letter that has the word "I" in it seven times, and I'm obviously in disagreement with some, one or more people on the council, I'm not writing on behalf of the governing body.
Let me just, let me just be devil's advocate, and I, I said this, maybe it was last year. We notice these meetings as a public meeting. The public comes out, they're televised, you're supposed to have healthy debate here. We see it in Congress all the time. All they do is debate. Um, but the, the point is, is that it happens here where there's, there's a dialogue, people can get up, and then folks in the audience can get up and say, "I don't, I disagree with the position you just said." It's, it's part of being a process. When we start devolving into letters to the editor, it's one week, somebody writes a letter, then the next week somebody writes a letter, then somebody else writes a letter. We basically take the whole debate out of this chamber and out of the public meeting and put it in letters to editors. So you might as well not have meetings anymore, we're just, you know...
No, I mean, you have to have meetings.
Mondays will be this...
You have to have meetings, because you have to come to a conclusion. It has to be done here in a meeting. But frankly, you know, if I look out there, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine people here, uh, not all of them are even residents. There's probably a couple dozen people who watch us on TV. I know from looking at Robert's click count, there's dozens of people who view the video. So in essence, fifteen thousand, five hundred, nine hundred people don't really pay a whole lot of attention to what goes on here. And if, the way that the First Amendment was set up was so that there would be more discussion in the public sector, not just at this meeting.
But this doesn't, this doesn't stop. What this says is that if you're gonna write a letter to the editor, and it's not authorized by the full governing body, you would state, "I'm an elected official in the borough of Madison."
I always, I always say I'm an elected official.
Yeah, I, I, I just find...
But I, I just find, I just find the rest of it just wastes the time of the reader, and it's pretty clear when I write on my, my own behalf or with somebody else, that we're speaking for ourselves only. And I know that people here disagree with that, but I, you know, as, as long as the First Amendment allows me to do that, I can, I will continue to do that. So that's my point about this particular session, section.
We hear you, but...
I have a question.
Sure.
Does Board of Ed have the same restriction?
No, because the state of New Jersey's Department of Education has a different set of ethics rules for boards of education.
But if you, if you're on the Board of Education and you write a letter...
I had to clearly identify myself. That's, that's the law of the state of New Jersey. This is not.
Yeah, but whether or not it's the law of the state, it strikes me as a very trivial issue. I don't, I, I mean, all you're saying is, "I'm speaking for myself. I'm an elected official and I don't represent the entire council." In this particular case, big deal.
Mm-hmm. And I just find it objectionable that I have council people telling me what I have to put into my letter. That violates my First Amendment right. And I, I truly believe that even the ethics rule for the school, for the school board people is unconstitutional. If somebody really wanted to press their case, they could probably override it, but no one's gonna bother to.
So we're just, again, maybe the word is...
Yeah, I mean, I'll look into it. What I'll do is, I've taken, I've heard some of your comments. What I'll do is I'll redline it for the next meeting, you know, make some tweaks based on what everyone's discussed here. You guys can consider it, and then maybe we can set up a little time and close sessions. If there's specific legal issues, one, folks that I could, I could share with you.
And, and not, not, not to, uh, prolong the, uh, free speech thing, I, I will say again that, uh, one, the idea of, uh, the disclaimer for when you're writing on, on behalf yourself, I truly believe is very important. I think that maybe the disclaimer when you're writing on behalf of the full council should be in there too. So that way the reader doesn't have to figure out which, uh, well, disclaimer is not there, so this and that, so they should both be in there. Um, I have learned a lot in my, uh, nine years plus up here, and yes, I wrote letters early on, but what I feel is very important is that as an open discussion going on, I think it is very important, I would hope that, uh, this council or any other council would never write letters while there's an open discussion. I understand there's that level of frustration when you are in the minority and you don't feel you got heard when the discussion is closed. In fact, that's when I wrote my last letter was related to being a minority. Deal was closed, we moved on, I just wanted the public to know where, how I felt. And I don't know if I put the disclaimer in there at that time, but as I said, I, I learn every day, and I would put a disclaimer in at this point if, if I was put in the same, same position.
But you see, I would take the exact opposite position. Voicing your point of view after the issue's done, unless, you know, you're correcting the record, is almost pointless. I mean, to me, the, the important part is when you're having the debate, to get your point across to as many people as possible and see if you can generate any support for it.
Well, what I would, what I would say...
And that's the way the, the political process works, with a small P. And that's the way the, the political process works, with a small "p." It's not a, it's not a Republican, a Democrat thing. It's a way politics works.
And to correct the record, a letter to the editor is not, is not official, so you're not correcting anything. If there was a misstatement made at a council meeting-
I'm talking about if the newspaper makes a mistake.
So I, I'd say, I said, you know, Pat Rowe is a member of X party. You'd say, and I said at a meeting, and you weren't here. The next week, Mr. Giacobi said at the last meeting, "I'm a member of X party." That's inaccurate. "I'm a member of Y party." Guess what? That's now on the record. That's the official minutes.
I understand. And I wasn't talking about necessarily somebody here making a misstatement. I'm saying if a newspaper reports something factually wrong, you know, I will write something after the fact to correct it. The, the issue may be, in, in terms of the council, a moot point, but.
Ben, you had your hand up, or?
No, I was gonna get out.
All right, so-
I, I, I got it.
So you got your homework assignment. We'll, we'll have this on the agenda as executive as-
I just had a couple of questions.
Yeah, I was driving the car, so I couldn't, I couldn't, I couldn't respond.
That's, that's also an ethical thing, is do not do, uh, don't drive and respond. Yes. Thank you for, so more to comment. As I said, the, the goal would be to refine this and hopefully approve it on New Year's Day for the first time, and every year after that. Robert, 2014 budget transfers.
Four departments require funds. Tax collector, the fire department, municipal court, and public works. We had an unplanned retirement in the, the tax collection department, which required additional salaries and wages. The fire department had insufficient overtime because of all the overtime that they utilized during the winter storms. The municipal court needs $24,000 in additional overtime because of higher court activities. $6,000 was not budgeted for the public defender for Morris Township in the original budget. And finally, for $100,000, we're recommending to fill both of the salt bins. The, the bulk of these funds are available in health insurance, and the primary reason for that is we've had nine employees opt out legally. They have coverage with their spouses. We, I've also had five or six employees reduce their coverage, and I know that on January of this year, two more employees are opting out. I do not expect to see any increase at all in the 2015 health insurance budget.
Any questions on these transfers? There's a resolution 305 that is listed consent. Thank you, Robert. Open Space Recreation Historic Preservation Advisory Committee Quarterly Report. Welcome, Melissa.
Thank you very much, counsel, for seeing the Open Space Quarterly Report, and thanks to Jim and Robert for all of your support pulling together the numbers again. And thank you to Austria for serving as such an able council liaison. The last report was made to the Borough Council on May 12, 2014, and today I am presenting the status of the Open Space account through September 30. The, the total inflow for 2014 is approximately $900,000, and the outflow has been approximately 632K to date. So we have a balance of about $260,000. The principal and interest for MRC is the bulk of that payment, and then we have recommended funding to the council, and has, the council has supported funds for nine other projects during the course of the year. One being the trail project, the fencing project at the MRC, which was part of the MRC master plan, which looks fantastic, and the opening ceremony was really great. And then we have the Bailey Ellard parking lot, Cole Park Fountain, and as you can see, when you drive through downtown, you can see the work on the James Building, which is pretty impressive, and I think welcome to the museum, because that was in pretty bad, bad, in a bad spot. So for the rest of the year, for 2014, we expect a couple of other payments to go out for the fencing project and the MRC environmental maintenance, and that will total $7,000.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Melissa?
Yeah, just one. Do we have a list of what we are expecting the Open Space Committee to be presenting to council for 2015 at this point?
So currently, we are, actually Austria and Jim are making outreach to those organizations that generally do. We would expect, like, from parks and likely the museum again. But we will do that, more of that information will come to light during the budget process, I believe.
So when you come back in January or beginning of the first quarter, we'll probably have a better understanding of, okay.
Yeah, and we don't have anything pending with the committee currently.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And hopefully between, in the next two meetings, we should have the MAF here for their quarterly report.
Can I just ask Ben a question? Ben, are any of the strategic planning groups taking into consideration any plans for Open Space and what their projects might be? So there's nobody that's touched on that?
It was not on the agenda of any of these committees.
Okay.
But on the other hand, as I said when we got started, and obviously it depends on how the council views the outcome of this committee's work, that there is no reason why they end at the end of this year, and there's no reason why we can't have some of them end and introduce other strategic planning committees. So if there was interest, we could have one focus on Open Space.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to ordinances for hearing.
Okay, the ordinance is scheduled for a hearing. Were introduced by title and passed on first reading at a regular meeting of the council held on October 27. They were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting same.
Call up ordinances for second reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 54-2014, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 34 of the Borough Code entitled Police Department.
I open the hearing for ordinance 54-2014. Anyone wishing to comment on this ordinance? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 54-2014.
I second it.
Counsel discussion. Roll call vote.
Mr. Calonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 54-2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And with this next ordinance, which relates to Park and Keeve Street, which is adjacent to the YMCA, I will be recusing myself, and Councilwoman Bailey will, as a board member also, and so for the next few minutes. Acting Mayor Landrigan.
Okay, I call up ordinance 55-2014.
An ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 185-32 of the Borough Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic to Include Time Limit Restrictions for Parking on Keeve Street.
I open the ordinance 55-2014.
Comments?
Okay, I close ordinance 55-2014.
I move ordinance, oh, all right. However you want.
I move ordinance 55-2014.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Calonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 55-2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerks to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
I asked Austin. Any comment? Okay, ordinance 55-2014.
Uh, ordinance 56.
56, yeah, sorry. I was looking at my eyes.
Okay. Ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Ordinance 17-2014 appropriating $80,000 from the Water Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a new generator at Well E to increase the appropriation from $80,000 to $140,000.
I open the hearing for ordinance 56-2014. Anyone wishing to comment on this? The ordinance, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 56-2014.
I'll second.
Okay, there was discussion on diesel versus-
Not gas. I saw Ray's memorandum, so it looks like in this instance, natural gas is, is, it's the expense. It doesn't bother me. It's the, it's the DEP, which is crazy, right? We're gonna put a diesel tank. It's okay, but a natural gas line may have a DEP issue. That's fine. But I would just ask that going forward, we consider the use of gas generators, you know, as, as opposed to diesel, and that's all.
Sounds good. Any other comments? Okay, roll call vote.
Mr. Calonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 56-2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Ordinance 57-2014.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 185 entitled Vehicles and Traffic, Article 8, Emergency No Parking.
I open the hearing for ordinance 57-2014. Please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 57-2014.
I second it.
Counsel discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Calonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 57-2014 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Now we're on to invitation for discussion number two. This is the way, when you can make comment on anything. Again, state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
John Hoover, Overhill Drive. My comments relate to the Code of Ethics. It would have been nice to have been able to read the Code of Ethics, but they weren't posted on the bulletin board out there, and I don't know why. Maybe I'm not allowed to see them for some strange reason, but they're not out there. Second, the attorney has recommended that we not have a Board of Ethics. I would urge the council to carefully consider that. I would opt, if it was me, I would opt for a Board of Ethics. I think it's important to do that. I think we want to do it locally. I don't think we want to allow the state to tell us what to do in all cases, and we should be able to appeal it locally and take a look at what the, what the ethics following are and how that works. The second thing, another thing is, somebody mentioned something about liaisons and how you deal with employees. My suggestion is that the liaisons do their liaison work first and then worry about that. What I mean by that is, show up at the meetings. Okay, that, you, you've heard me before speak about this. I really hate the debates being done to the, in the newspapers. I just think that's ridiculous. Everything related to board matters, council matters ought to be discussed in council. You have plenty and ample opportunity to discuss them individually, personally, and in the closed sessions, and here in the board, and I would encourage you to do that, and not argue items in the, in the letters, okay? That's all I have to say. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So again, when we go to executive, you can share, share the-
And I just want to be clear. It's not, the, the local board, from my experience in dealing with them, I think it becomes a huge expense to local municipalities, because you have to have a whole separate layer of separate legal counsel, etc., where at the state, there's still a whole judicial due process system where they have individuals who are, we don't, you don't pay for them, and they review the same system. So, and what ends up happening at the local level is whoever has the ethics charges filed at the local level, it then gets reviewed by the state anyways. So it's basically like in civil service. If you're a civil service municipality, you're gonna discipline an employee, you have a local hearing, you discipline the employee, and then the employee has the right to appeal the, the decision to the Civil Service Commission, and you do the, it's a redo all over again. So from my experience, I just think it's more expeditious, and it saves the taxpayers a lot of money. And when I say it's not the state, they have folks that oversee this at the Finance Board, and the Finance Board can ultimately send it out to a judge for finding a fact, a Ministry of Law judge. So just, from my experience, taxpayers are already paying for that. There's no need to duplicate that effort at the local level.
And at some point, if we felt there was need, it could always be addressed.
You could always do it later on, but I would give this a shot if that doesn't work. And I can tell you from my, from the few places where I've seen them locally, unfortunately, I won't name the towns, but I've seen it also kind of devolve into a very partisan body. And, and, you know, very often, what's found at the local level, there'll be a splash in the paper, so-and-so's unethical, and then they'll go to the Finance Board and say, "That's ridiculous." There was nothing unethical about that at all. So I, I just think you get a little more neutrality when you, when you're dealing with, it's like when, when you go to, you know, Superior Court. Most of us don't know the judges. You're going there, you're gonna get a, a different shake when you're appearing for him or her.
And we can, uh-
At that point, we can post it, so that before you guys take any action on it, members of the public could look at it, review it, get up and speak. Because we've already said you're not taking action on it this year anyways. It always should be at your reorganization in January 1, I guess.
Yep. Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak? Sam?
Sam, Sociedad Park Avenue. I sort of with this Code of Ethic, I, I agree with Matt. We don't need another expense for lawyers and stuff like that. And, you know, we all have an opinion, just that we gotta start respecting each other's opinion. So we don't need to spend more money on that. Just gotta play nice. I had just a couple of things, and then let me tell you a couple of things, so don't kill my three minutes. Then you can answer. First of all, I've been watching that North Street job, and, because I live right on, right on top of North Street. The Savelli's doing a tremendous job, very good job. I mean, he comes in there with a, with a milling machine as big as this room right here. And I just suggest that next year, if you're gonna do two, three, four, whatever you're gonna do, you do the same thing. Put them all together. This way, you get the big guys with the big equipment. You can answer this. Bob, do we still have a construction committee?
Cap, um, capital-
Well, the reason, the reason I ask, because I don't want you to kill my three minutes. Who, who decides, for example, North Street, they milled 99% of North Street. The last 100 feet or so, they didn't mill it. Doesn't make any sense. They did the same thing on, on Woodland Road. They did the same thing on Brook Lake Road. Doesn't make sense. Then also, not only the building, the road, you know, kids go to school that way, walk down North Street and all them streets around there. They didn't, they're leaving about 50 feet of sidewalk in front of the North Stars Club, which don't make sense. They stopped right in front of the, the last house before the North Stars, then the sidewalk continues after the North Stars. Who makes these decisions? Does the construction committee review all these things, or?
The typical process with a project is the, engineer-
Give me some, yeah. Because I got another hard question.
Engineer will design the project. We will, most, most likely on a reconstruction, but not a milling overlay, but a reconstruction. There would be a neighborhood meeting presenting the design, which would show sidewalks, yes or no, location, you know, trees that might be taken out to, to get input, and then it goes to final review. So that's the, the normal process.
Like this construction committee look at everything that goes on. I mean, that's what the whole thought was all about. In other words, you know, give some suggestions or get the right people involved and see if, you know, like, it don't make sense. 99% of the road is milled, and about 50 feet of sidewalk is not put in. Doesn't make any sense to me. And maybe the construction committee could have picked that up and say, "Well, who, you know, it seems like, don't make sense."
Yep.
And then they end up, and Woodland Road, when they did that a few years ago, they end up going back and finishing the road. So now you got, you know, that's, that's one question. The next thing is, you know, way before the winter came, it's coming winter, we were gonna do this front out here. I mean, it's getting worse and worse. The entrance way and this beautiful hall, in the Borough Hall. I mean, have you seen how bad it's getting to start?
The trust, yeah.
And it comes springtime, after this winter, it's gonna be twice as bad. And the rust is gonna be twice as bad. I thought we were gonna fix this before the winter. That was my suggestions five months ago.
Actually, the trustee, we took that suggestion to the trustees, and they took that on as their, their project. And the plan will be to lift each of those slabs, reset them under, I think, with a much better base. And so, yes, we have to go through another winter with it, but it will be done properly next spring.
What it costs, what it costs this year is gonna cost twice as much next year. So that was another thing that don't make sense to me. Also, I wanna talk about the east wing. Are we gonna do something with this east wing so we can?
East wing of Hartley Dodge, the lower level and main floor, someday. It's not in the near future, but as we get-
You're going over the, I mean, if you, if the Board of Ed don't wanna come in, which they should come in, how does the mayor and council feel about the Board of Ed coming over here? I mean, last time I talked to you about it, you said you were gonna have a, a meeting, you know, you were gonna get together. You discussed this, because that makes sense if they can come down here.
They, they, they know the space is there, and they've decided that they have other options. We certainly, it is, this is a beautiful building, and not to have a section of the building being used is not ideal. And so we will, at some point, take that on. As you talk about all the other challenges we have, there are a whole, whole host of priorities that we have to deal with.
And by the way, Matt, you're looking good, buddy.
You're looking good.
Thanks. Wanna go for a cup of coffee?
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. Sorry. And now we get on to Consent Agenda Resolutions.
Consent Agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion- requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, all resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolution R. three hundred and five dash 2014 through R. three hundred and fifteen dash 2014.
Second.
Counsel discussion, roll call vote.
Mr. Cattellinello?
Uh, yes on all of them, except R. three oh eight dash two zero one four, on which I must abstain.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Hey, there is no unfinished business, approval of vouchers.
Okay, public safety, thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, forty cents, health and public assistance, eleven thousand, four hundred and forty dollars, sixty-two cents, public works and engineering, two hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and seven dollars, seventy-eight cents, community affairs, six thousand, two hundred and one dollars, seven cents, finance and borough clerk, five million, six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars, ninety-nine cents, and utilities, a hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred, twenty-nine dollars, seventeen cents, total of six million, one hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars and three cents.
Mayor, I move the approval of the vouchers.
Second.
Discussion, roll call vote.
Mr. Cattellinello?
Yes.